All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson? Kapler?
Here.
Here.
Ormsby?
Here.
Satterfield?
Here.
Stoltenberg?
Here.
Here. All right, we had minutes from the meeting of December 20th, 2023?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from December 20th, 2023.
A second.
Oh, I think Janessa got that one. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And?
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign. The minutes are recommended for approval. All right, we have the 2023 Plan and Zone Commission Annual Report.
I will have the packet speak for itself. I think you were all there, but the trends are basically we're a busy city for a growing city. Sorry, I've never been here before. I'll let the packet speak for itself, but the trends are we're a growing city, and we're seeing a lot of rezonings, we're seeing a lot of site development plans. I will note that Taylor Beswick did put a few facts together that he'd like to share with the with the commission that kind of put a put a highlight on what's already there.
That'd be great. Yeah, appreciate that, Mark. All right, Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mark. So we had a lot of different submittals in 2023. Those come to the commission via plats or rezoning, site plans. Some of them are have multiple reviews and approvals. If you boil those down into just project areas, we roughly had like 26 projects, large project areas that are adding either housing units to the city, commercial square footage, industrial square footage, or we have a public pool, landing, churches, civic space to the city. So I kind of went through, and these are all projects and cases that this commission reviewed in 2023, and they have the potential, not maybe this coming year, but over the next few years, as I'll touch on later, of adding these various amenities to the city. So in 2023, we had many residential projects come for the commission and then approved by council. That added 135 potential single-family homes, 255 townhomes, or 423 apartment units. So that's a total of over 900 units that are being either getting ready to be developed, roads are going in, or getting ready for building permits as we speak for 2024 and beyond. In the commercial realm, a lot of commercial projects in 2023, over 1.2 million square feet. A lot of that was either in the expansion of the Betplex area, which had over 435,000 square feet. We have a new development just west of the current Betplex, next to the Authentic's apartments that has a potential for 100, over potentially over 400,000 square feet right there. A number of other smaller developments, but adding up, it's a ton of potential. So you'll see future site plans related to these and other reviews or building permits. They've already gone through a site plan phase. So a lot right there. Industrial, 80,000 square feet in industrial, not as much as probably in years past, but there's some significant ones, especially down in our State Street corridor near the river. Two projects alone were about 30,000 square feet. And then in our public civic area, so we're talking churches, schools, even civ- city facilities, the frozen landing and the new pool, the landing, that's over 232,000 square feet. So we have a new school, St. Joan of Arc, and a future church going in that area. That whole annexation project will have a future school involved. It'll be roughly the same size, somewhat. That's probably farther down the road, but that's Forest Grove School, churches, as I mentioned. So that's a lot of projects, a lot of different of kind of a well-balanced view of what you guys approved that came through this body, and that will be be building in the next, you know, one to plus years. Just wanted to let you get that kind of sink in, and it's really important work you guys do, and very significant. And it's a lot of big numbers there. So a lot of growth happening.
Yeah, great stuff. And we do, we sit here and work with what you did every day and every week and every month, so we appreciate what staff has done. One of the things, I look back and, you know, maybe it's kind of a joke, but it wasn't, but at one point it's like everything new in town was a car wash, or it was a storage facility. But now what we're seeing is a really nice balance. We've seen a lot of multifamily come in. The multifamily has been absorbed very nicely. We're seeing a lot of mixed use. We're seeing some industrials. So the balance, I think, has really been awesome. So however that's happening, let's hope we keep doing that. So, yeah, appreciate it. Anyone else from the commission like to comment? No? All right, Taylor, thank you. Appreciate that.
Just a side note, Lisa does a great job every year putting that data together and crunching the numbers and-
We know who the real boss is, so.
Doesn't get the accolades she deserves. So good job, Lisa.
Absolutely. Yeah, appreciate that. All right, the next agenda I had is election of officers for the upcoming year.
Are you up to continue in your position?
If you would have me, I would have you, so.
Then I will nominate you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to keep essentially the order in the way it's been. So all those in favor to make no change in the leadership of the Plan and Zone, say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? No? All right, we're done with the election of offices. Is there just one, or do we have a vice chair? Just one, right? Yes, okay. All right. So again, welcome, everyone, to the Plan and Zone Commission in this cool January night. So we have a number of cases before us. We are a recommending body appointed by the city council and the mayor to review site plans, zoning changes, land use and such. We're very interested in your input. There's a podium to my right and to your left back there. I will recognize the audience at a particular point and ask if you're interested to go back and give us your name and any input you might have on a case. And with that, we will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. First case on the agenda has been, is the final plat of James Young edition that has been requested to be deferred again. So we'll move on to buy the applicant. Moving on to the second case, case 24-006. This is a rezoning located at 4255 Middle Road. The map of this area, this is at the intersection of Middle Road and Tanglefoot Lane. The applicant is Brian Blom. The request is for rezoning of approximately 2.4 acres, more or less, from A1 to R2, a single-family residence district. The proposal would then be to have two single-family lots on that rezoned parcel shown in blue on the map. Future land use map currently designates this area as urban medium intensity and parks and open space. That parks and open space is to reflect the Crow Creek watershed and floodplain on the site. Our future land use map is a fuzzy map, so as long as it's recognizing and contemplating that floodplain, that's what the future land use map is there for. The current zoning is A1, as mentioned. The owner does propose to continue using, there's a farm and a farmhouse with a horse pasture at the location. The owner, Brian, will continue and propose to continue using that, utilizing that extra land for the horse pasture and occupying the farmhouse. This rezoning would not impede on that. The proposed zoning is R2. This is a compatible zoning district and does the UMI future land use category. And then the areas noted in the floodplain near Crow Creek will not be platted, will be platted as an outlot, so they will not be occupied by a home. The concept is pretty simple. Access will be off of Tanglewood Road. That is a public right-of-way. 50-foot strip of land on the east side of the zoning tract will remain R or A1, and will be used by the farm for access to the land east of Crow Creek. Concept, basically a final plat but not being reviewed tonight, shows how the plat would look for these new homes. You have two developable lots located on the western portion of the rezoning tract, and then I mentioned that outlot on the eastern portion, which will allow two single-family homes on that property. As I mentioned, this plat will be reviewed at a future meeting. And just to look at that floodplain map and how the outlot aligns with that, this is the upcoming maps that are being, will be adopted by the city, and FEMA has issued those maps to be adopted by April this year. Areas of the floodway and floodplain are shown blue or striped red and blue. There is, staff does contend, there's sufficient building area reserved for those two lots for two single-family homes and outside of the floodplain. Rezoning request must adequately address seven criterias outlined in Section 111513B to meet the standard for a positive recommendation. Staff contends the request meets this requirement, and analysis for each criteria is included in the staff report for this case. Given the evidence and reasons stated, and the staff analysis, staff recommends the Plan and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning request from A1 to R2. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since presentation or publication?
No updates.
All right, thank you. Questions? Oh, I do need to do the public hearing here. Yes. All right, we have a public hearing. This is a little bit administrative. We have a public hearing. I have to open a public hearing, ask for comment, close the public hearing. So I will now ask, is there proof of publication for case 24-006? Yes, there is. I will open the public hearing, at which point I will ask anyone in the audience if they have comments with regard to this particular matter. Going once, going twice, you've all bought it. Okay, we will close the public hearing. And then we have discussion and questions by the commission. Any questions or discussion by the commission on this one?
I just had a question about the road, Tanglewood Road. It looks like you said it was a, it's a public street, public drive, and it kind of dead ends, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a public street up to the bridge, actually, including the bridge, just a little over, might be 100 feet past that. Actually, it's on our resurfacing program for this coming year. Now that we do have a resident that lives on the property east of the bridge, it took a beating over the last few years, so we do have that scheduled to be resurfaced.
So it doesn't need like a turnaround or anything like that?
No, because it basically would be grandfathered at this point.
That's what I was curious about. Thank you.
Yep.
Others in the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this outside of the public hearing? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission. And I'll need a roll call vote for that, please. A motion and a second first?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve case number 23-043, subject to staff recommendations.
046, 24-006.
Sorry, 24-006.
Yep.
Still looking at the first one.
I'll second. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-006. Can I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Kapler?
Yep.
O'Carney?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland.
Yes. Okay, recommended for approval, case 24-006. Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Next case on the agenda, 24-001, is a final plat, a replat for Devil's Bluff Third Edition. You may be familiar with the site. The applicant is Dave Kempin. He is proposing to split the site, which contains, will contain three apartment buildings and 12 townhomes into three separate lots. No change to the development is proposed. The purpose for separating is financing of the project. Future land use map shows this area as UMI, urban medium intensity, and the zoning district is R4, medium density, multifamily residential district. The final plat proposes three lots. Lot 1 will contain 12 townhomes. Lot 2 will contain one apartment building, 38 units, and Lot 3 will contain two apartment buildings with 38 units. I will note each lot does meet the requirement for minimum density setbacks and other bulk standards for the R4 district, and the applicant is allowed to use floodplain area as part of the density calculation based on a previous agreement with the city, dates back to, I believe, 1999 for this property. So no changes are for the development. This is simply taking the whole lot, splitting it up for separate financing for each part, portion of the project. Given the evidence and reasons stated, staff and staff analysis of the request, staff recommends, Plan and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the proposed final plat for 24-001. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything to add?
No, I think Taylor did a great job with the explanation. We're talking about just the re-subdivision. It doesn't change the approved site plan. If the changes to site plan were to be brought forward, that would have to come through this body and have a staff review and all and all that. I will note that we continue to work with the property owner in a larger sense on the landscaping to come along our public right-of-way or our public trail, if you will, it's not really right-of-way, but our trail easement. And we're really happy with the way that's developing, and we're putting some plans together that's going to be a pretty robust landscaping feature. Not really part of this decision, but just to know that we haven't forgot about that. We're going to have a really nice-looking trail and walking path with additional trees and plantings coming once the weather improves just a little bit. But we continue to meet with them on that and feel positive about that relationship.
Yeah, and I know last fall, before the weather changed, I was out riding the bike trail there, and there were a lot of comments that came in during the review of that case about the impact that it would have negatively. And I really didn't feel like it was a bad-looking development from the bike path. It didn't take away from the ambiance of the bike path from my own personal opinion. I thought it ended up like a pretty good fit with what was there compared to what was there as well. So, yeah.
And should continue to improve.
Yeah, yeah. I had one, one question. Is, maybe it's in the fine print here and I can't see it, but are there cross easements in place for all the different lots that will be resulting here so that somehow there's legal access, dedicated access between them?
Across Lot 3 and Lot 1, there is an access for Lot 2. This is, this is the third edition. So the second edition comprised of two lots, and there was that access easement across all the combination of Lot 1 and Lot 3. So it's the same situation here. It's just going across now Lot 1 and Lot, the new Lot 3. So that does meet that standard.
Yeah, each resulting lot has its own dedicated means of access. Okay. Others in the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? You guys are all too easy tonight. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 24-001, subject to staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-001, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Okay, thank you. 24-001 is recommended for approval. Okay, next case.
Next case on the agenda, case 24-002. This is also a final plat for Competition Corner First Edition. This property is currently pending a rezoning, city council, and was reviewed last month in December by this commission. The applicant is John H. Venhorst Family Limited Partnership. The plat proposed includes one developable lot and includes a dedication of right-of-way. The proposal, still pending, is potentially a commercial office building, but that has not been cited as of yet by the applicant. The future land use map shows this area as community commercial with some greenway on the property for drainage. There's a drainage swill that runs through the property. The current zoning is A1, as mentioned, but pending a C2 neighborhood commercial going through council right now. Surrounding properties not located in the TBK Bank Sports Complex are also A1 to the west, south, and east. Century Heights 25th Edition is located east of this development, and there's a buffer of A1 which has not yet been rezoned or developed, but likely will be, as shown in the future land use map, the pending future land use map, I should say, will be likely residential of some medium density likely. The final plat, the zoning in C2, so setbacks are shown on that for that zoning classification. As mentioned, there's many allowed uses in the district, including commercial office. Access is provided via city-dedicated right-of-way. It's a variable width right-of-way named Remington Road North. This will connect to the roundabout at Competition Drive and Forest Grove Drive. The variable width is due to it merging into that roundabout for sufficient width. It will include at least one side trail, 10-foot, and sidewalk, potentially two. There is an additional access point off of Middle Road, which is a private drive, 43-foot in width. Currently, it'll be allowed to have full access. In the future, when Middle Road is expanded, it'll be a right-in, right-out only, I believe, with a median blocking any, any way for somebody to take a left-hand turn in there. So none of those dividers would be needed at this site. It's very similar to what you have north of Middle, or north of Forest Grove right now, along Middle, prevents anybody from going in there. So the developable lot size is 10.85 acres, also done, excluding the right-of-way. The concept, as a reminder, that was submitted with the rezoning, shows a development proposed on the western portion, with the, the concept is similar to the proposed plat with the private drive and the city right-of-way. Given the evidence and reasons stated, staff and staff analysis, staff recommends, the Plan and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the proposed final plat for case 24-002, and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything from your perspective?
Just highlight that staff is happy to see the extension of that Remington Road North. That will probably become a collector-level type street and take some pressure off our north-south routes in Benton North. As we all know, those tend to be the ones that take a lot of our traffic right now. So we're doing a good job developing and creating a little better grid pattern and adding another north-south thoroughfare with Remington will be secured with this plat.
Yeah, great.
So yeah, Remington Road North will, it's in staff's long-term plans to have that run all the way to Hopewell. So it would provide a parallel as a collector to Middle Road and give a little relief, and then also provide future access to developments that are currently zoning A1 surrounding this tract.
Great. Brent, if you were going to look in your crystal ball, when would Middle Road be expanded?
I'm hoping this section, so we have a federal aid grant to do the engineering that we received from Congresswoman Miller Meeks' office, just shy of $2 million to take care of all the engineering, all the way down to
Thanks.
just south of Crow Creek Road, where the four lane stops the concrete. So that's actually going out here, hopefully within a month. So engineering will take about a year, and then we got to start looking for funding. But that will also break that larger project into three or four pieces, is my guess. I would hope that the piece, specifically between Forest Grove and Hopewell, including the Hopewell intersection, I would really hope is less than five years. You know, you've got at least, like I said, a year, year and a half of planning, be some minor property acquisition, but that's still a $5 million construction project. So either we can fund it as part of a larger development, if that happens to happen before then, or we'll have to go looking for federal aid dollars, which will take a little bit of time.
How would that lay up with the forecast for the new interchange on Middle Road and I-80?
So they'll be in 2025.
That will be.
Yes, that construction will start in the fall of '25. It'll be bid in July of '25. So most likely tail end of that.
Okay. And only dull up the wick on the rest of it when more cars come off.
Always something out there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission on this case? Pretty straightforward. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve case number 24-002, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-002, final plat of Competition Corner First Edition. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 24-002 is recommended for approval. Seat change.
Mr. Chairman, case we have before is 24-003, involves a rezoning, and this is the parcel here that former Hobby Lobby happened to be on. Kevin Kellner, Focus Development, is proposing to change the zoning of this parcel from C2 Community Commercial District to C3 General Business District. The current future land use designation is community commercial, and as you can see, community commercial is to the south. We do have a public semi-public area here for religious assembly. We also have parks and recreation over here in Davenport, and then we have urban low intensity in this area. This land use designation facilitates the rezoning to a C3 General Business District. Surrounding zoning, the park over here is S-OS Open Space Zoning District. You see two community commercial throughout this area here, where we have Duck Creek Plaza, and then throughout further north, and then R1 Single Family Residence to the east of Interstate 74. The current uses and future uses of this parcel will be for financial institution, which is currently here, medical offices and adult daycare within the structure, and then warehousing, and also some minor assembly of certain types of items. This is the sewer map showing this area. This has never been platted as a lot of record. It's approximately 12.75 acres in size. The former Hobby Lobby building complies with what will be the current and future floor area ratios, and the Hobby Lobby structure itself is 70 feet removed from the nearby structure, the nearest structure being here for religious assembly, and that is the distance that is required in buffer yard separation between an I3 heavy industrial district and an R1 single-family residence district. So it meets pretty much the maximum separation from the nearest structure. This was originally a grants department store back in 1972. It was last used by Hobby Lobby. The buildout is expected to proceed, as you've already seen, a site development plan from south to north, the adult daycare, the area for will be medical services, and then the area that will also be used for warehousing and also some type of assembly. The building lays out like this for the future, and you can see the docks here for the warehousing aspect, e-fulfillment center, which will involve some assembly of certain packaging that will be displayed at convenience stores, medical offices, and then adult daycare. And this is going to proceed from south to north in terms of the way that this would fill out. The area outlined in blue is already what is going to be occupied for medical offices and adult daycare, and this is a blow-up here of what that looks like, the remainder for other office, and then the assembly area as well as for warehousing. As you proceed further to the north is what will be filling out this particular structure. Kimberly Road is the means of access. There is no other means of access into this parcel. You have two entry and exit points right here. We also have, again, for utilities, utilities mainly along here for this particular parcel along Kimberly Road, and all material utility connections are already in place. If there does need to be modifications, then of course they will be evaluated by staff. Sidewalk is already present here, and then connectivity is primarily going to be by driving up and then parking very close to the facility. There will be little, if any, type of retail activity within the area. There are 570 parking spaces, 32 of which are ADA compliant, that are already on-site. So parking is very sufficient for any of the proposed business uses that would go into the structure. And as you can see, the floodplain aerial details the floodway and then the 100-year event area in the aqua and the 500-year event area within the orange area. This is the outline of the parcel. There's no portion of it in either one of those areas. There's no portion of it in either one of those areas. And we do have a procedure, of course, that we go through, uh, under our ordinances, eleven-fifteen thirteen B. And, uh, it does conform to the land use map. The proposal does, uh, it meets goal C to attract and retain business and industry, uh, by, uh, meeting market needs. And then we also have, uh, step three, which is steps one and two that have been met. And then all screening and landscaping will meet the site development plan standards. As I mentioned earlier, that the nearest structure is seventy feet removed from this location. Uh, the business activity will be contained within the structure regarding any externalities. And vehicular traffic exiting will be, uh, only going in and out, uh, through the existing, uh, means of access. Uh, nothing will be joined to any other lot. The other parcels are very similar in nature in terms of their zoning. They've been zoned C-two for numerous decades now. Uh, and this activity again be somewhat self-contained. Then the services that are provided, uh, simply are not enriching to the applicant, but they also provide jobs and tax base to local community and services to local community. Staff in reviewing this proposal recommend approval. And we would make it contingent upon the condition that any future site development plan must materially conform to the concept plan accompanying this rezoning application. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Uh, this is another one where we will do the public hearing. So I will ask Lisa, is there proof of publication for case twenty-four dash zero zero three?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing and I will ask if there's any public comment relative to this case. Don't see any. All right, I will close the public hearing. And then we'll have a discussion with the plan and zone commission in this manner.
I'm just happy to see it repurposed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few questions. You can let me know and like to hear them.
We'd love to hear from you right now, Ann.
All right, I, I feel like I'm in the audience, but I don't think I am. I look like I am.
You, you, we feel you, we feel you.
Okay, so first of all, I, I would comment on the significant improvement in the appearance of the building, which I think everyone will appreciate. And Greg, I just wanna confirm based upon what you explained. Once these two new functions are completed, then that builds out the entire building, correct?
Uh, it builds out the building. I, we can never, of course, make any claims on the site itself, if there may not be other
Correct.
proposals, but this structure, what you see, uh, here with this elevation is primarily what you're going to get. And there are modifications on-site being made at this time to make this structure appear as you see it right now.
Okay, so, so my next question has to do with, uh, a project that we looked at sometime back that involved, um, an entertainment business in the outer part, the parking lot of this building. That was a combination restaurant and pickleball. And, uh, obviously, nothing's happened with that, but that was approved. And I'm just curious how that factors into this.
If, Mr. Chairman, can I jump in on that one?
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I think, um, I think staff is really happy to see this go to a C-three type of zoning district. It actually makes more sense, it's more sense. It's up against the interstate. It's, uh, along a busy thoroughfare. And so the externalities of those two pieces of traffic moving by all the time, the C-three fits pretty well right there. So we feel comfortable that if other things were to come to this property, we're not aware of any. Um, this is a new plan that developers brought forward. We're very happy to see this plan. But if there were new, uh, opportunities on this rather large property, we think having them fit in C-three makes perfect sense. And we would, uh, you know, entertain looking at those. I don't know the future of any, of that development you spoke of. Uh, it happens sometimes that things get brought to us and then, uh, the numbers just don't work out on the backside. We don't analyze that. We analyze the use. Uh, we think the use is appropriate in this case. And we think C-three is appropriate and other uses that may come, uh, we have no worries or concerns of.
Okay, thanks. Ann, did that help there?
It did. And may I ask one more question? So since we're looking at this entire parcel, and we have two existing smaller out, I'll say, outer buildings on that lot. One that was a bank at one time and one that is a pharmacy fulfillment center, I guess is the right description or. How would the potential future uses of those two buildings be impacted by this new, um, zoning? And what, I'm always sometimes at a little bit of a loss as to, okay, what fits in C-two versus what fits in C-three? Do you feel that that would be compatible with the whole site?
We do. Greg and I spent a lot of time, uh, when he was doing his analysis, talking about that. And, and if the bank were to magically turn back into a bank tomorrow, um, that would be an allowed use in C-three. There'd be no special conditions or restrictions on it. Again, we think the C-three, given the size of this property, its location between two major thoroughfares, really makes more sense than C-two ever made. Um, so we have no fears about those uses. Those are compatible and allowable uses.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Anything else, Ann?
I don't believe so. Thanks, Ray.
No, yeah, and I, I sort of, sort of, I did share a few of the same observations. One, I wrote a note, here's a fifty-plus-year-old building that's getting a, a recycle. And if you go back and look in the, um, shopping center and building life cycle worlds, that's amazing. So to take this site and repurpose it a second and third time and, and take it to this next level, um, makes way too much sense. Utilize an existing building with tons of area around it. And as you note, heavy-duty interstate on the east, um, very strong four-lane on the west. Heavy gravity of C-three and activity to the south. So it totally makes sense from my perspective as well. So, um, excited to see a redevelopment, repurpose and rejuvenation of, of area that's been kind of mothballed for a while. So, nice job. Yeah, others in the commission?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, I see C-two pretty much the entire stretch of Kimberly here. Is this the first prod, first lot that is going to be C-three?
You, you would have C-three further to the south. And it's, it, it's the land use to, remember, is community commercial. So it's not like it per se is a, you know, some people wanna use the terminology spot zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, the community commercial land use anticipates, uh, that there could be an upgrade in the type of activity that can go here. Uh, but it would not be such an upgrade, of course, to tolerate, uh, anything of an I-two or I-three nature. That, you know, this is, this is gonna be limited. It's setting up, uh, certain exhibitions that are eventually gonna find their way into different, uh, retail establishments. So it is not an intense type use per se. It's the warehousing element. And you do look at the size of the warehousing element, just due south and home D-bone. And it's compatible in that regard. Uh, so there is, it's not a quantum. We, from, in terms of the standards or that are, or should say the practices that may occur within the structure.
It's just broadening this, the usage.
To some extent, for the warehousing element, a little bit alone, and then the assembly, uh, element, which is, is something that, uh, is found in a C-three district. And again, as, uh, as Mr. Hunt has pointed out, uh, it has, given its proximity to the very busy traffic, high-traffic areas, in particular the interstate, uh, this is something that's not uncommonly found.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else from the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? No, we'll return to the commission. Oh, sorry, we'll return to the commission for our motion and second and roll call on motion. We had our public hearing, so. All right, can I have a motion and a second then, please?
I'll move that case two-four-zero-zero-three be approved.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call on the motion, Lisa, please?
Kepler?
Yes.
Cole Carney?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wendland?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Twenty-four dash zero zero three is recommended for approval. Okay, that would take us to case eleven twenty-four dash zero zero four.
I'll be recreating myself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we have, uh, a change of use site development plan. We have an addition that is being built onto an existing structure as part of lot fifty-two Heather Glenn St. Andrews addition. And that is for a building regarding religious assembly. This area right now is zoned, or is, uh, has a community commercial land use, which does permit the C-three general business district zoning. And religious assembly is a permitted use within the C-three district. Surrounding parcels, C-three to the south, C-two to the southeast, C-two to the west and southwest. And then there is R-one, uh, to the north and then R-five, uh, multi-family resident, or I should say, high-density multi-family residence district zoning. And then the R-one single-family to the north. When this lot was platted, it was platted with the intention of being a commercial lot. It is two acres in size. It was part of the Heather Glenn at St. Andrews addition. And at present, the, uh, C-three zoning, uh, requires a two-to-a-one-floor area ratio. And, uh, that is being met with the structure, even with the addition, that is still being met. And the setback standards are also being met with the proposed addition. This is the original site plan. And there was a letter of protest or a letter of interest, I should say, that, uh, was introduced as part of these proceedings. I did talk with the neighbor today. Uh, he mistook this, the original site plan, for being the site plan that is up for consideration tonight. That is incorrect. This is from nineteen-ninety-five and this is the best plot plan that we had available. And, uh, it just simply shows somewhat of a landscaping area. The tenant structures are pretty much similar in nature, except, uh, that this one is now combined. That common wall is no longer in place. This is the front of the structure, looking from Fifty-third Avenue. And then this is Eighteenth Street on the side. This is the area of the proposed addition, eight hu- eight-hundred-fourteen square feet. And this is in the northeast corner. And this is the back area parking lot on the north side. There is a sidewalk that comes around from the front and allows access to the back portion of this building. This may be difficult, somewhat difficult to read. We tried to break this out. But essentially, this is the, uh, Amisfer's Restaurant right here. And then there are various other businesses. This is the convenience store here that are broken out within, uh, the current site plan. This area shaded in here is where the structure is proposed to be connected. Structure showed be fifteen feet in height. It has a, an entry on the west side. And this is, as you would see from the roof area, how the structure would look. And this is the interior of that structure, the internal plan, uh, showing the architecture. Thoroughfare access, again, Fifty-third Avenue, there's a current access to the front of the strip mall. And then from Eighteenth Street, we have access to the rear parking lot, as well as to the front of the convenience store and then the pumps that are out in front of the convenience store. Utility connections are found throughout and they will pretty much remain the same. There will be some additions placed back here to accommodate the structure. But pretty much what has been in place for the last almost thirty years is what will remain. Pedestrian, uh, travel throughout the area. You have a recreational trail here, seven feet in width. And you have a four-foot sidewalk on the, uh, east side of Eighteenth Street. Uh, street parking, the count has been met. And, uh, if there are any other changes in the future, staff will evaluate those to see what parking accommodations, uh, need to be evaluated, along with any other internal, uh, modifications to the structure. Stormwater detention is not required because the area being consumed, as you can see here, is already paved. So there is no change in the amount of impervious surface to the site. Landscaping is shown here in green and these areas here. And then these aqua areas show the existing lighting. And nothing is going to change in that regard, uh, at least as proposed. Staff in reviewing this project would make the recommendation for approval with the condition that any additional changes to uses in the strip mall occupancy should require evaluation by relevant city departments to determine procedures necessary to approve the changing occupancy or building modifications. With that being said, I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything from your perspective?
Nothing.
Okay, thanks. So I had this letter, and you essentially saying that's moot at this point? That he didn't really have any issues after you conversed with him, or should, are we still entering this?
I mean, it should, we would put it in the record, I imagine, anyway. Uh, but the, the main, uh, his main considerations were about, uh, this former plan from nineteen-ninety-five. And he mistook it as what was going to be proposed. And then, uh, it, further in the report too, it elicits this as being from nineteen-ninety-five. Uh, we did discuss the other issues of parking, as I just mentioned in the report, and stormwater detention. And, uh, he, he was okay with, uh, what, uh, we had discussed.
So the add addition of fencing and the height and all those things, those are all moot at this point? Okay, great. But we will have this in the record, Lisa, correct? Thank you. Okay. Questions and comments from the commission with regard to this case?
I was just a little bit curious to the, yeah, developer-owner, um, how many people come in at a time for this type of religious, um, event or ceremony, 'cause I'm not very familiar with it. So I was just kinda curious. Somebody could share with that?
I believe just two at a time and a day, correct? It's usually half-hours, not during.
Can I get you to step back so we can pick you up at the microphone back there?
I could speak loud enough?
Well, let's get you on it, because there's a microphone that goes right for the recording. Thank you.
Absolutely. So you could hear me now?
Yep, just tell us who you are, if you would.
Uh, my name is Rabbi Kadoner.
Okay.
Um, the owner of the, of the, of the building.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be, uh, used, uh, after hours. It's in the evening and two people at a time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, Greg, maybe you can walk me through this. When I, when I read the packet, the notes I made were that seventy-seven parking places were required. And there are seventy-eight parking places present. But in looking at the site plan, it looks like perhaps as many as six parking stalls will be voided by the construction of this building. That math doesn't add up to me, but I'm not the best at math, so I'm hoping you can help me see the errors of my calculations.
Uh, from what I can tell, the area that we shaded in consumed three parking spaces. And then, uh, I had gone through and counted these and I, I did not come up with, uh, anything different than what was presented.
Okay, so if, so that means there were initially, before considering this new construction, seventy-eight parking spots on-site?
I think there were fewer than seventy-eight.
Okay. All right. Um, I also had a question about how the placement of this construction would impact the exits for the existing restaurant? And would they still have the, um, ingress and egress from the back and emergency exits adequate for their space?
I think maybe the, uh,
That would be, yeah, to be an architectural engineering review that we're not doing at this point. That would be part of any building permits or remodeling permits that were, uh, to be, yet to be pulled. So focusing on the use here is what staff has done and what staff's analysis provides. As far as the interior buildout and layout, that will be reviewed, uh, through our building department when that comes in.
If you will, I could answer that question. As far as I know, um, nothing is gonna be changed. The, both doors, uh, of the restaurant in the back will remain. Um, there'll be, it's starting from, um, the other side of the, where the sidewalk is. So no, it's not gonna be, um, not gonna be closed.
Okay, thank you.
The other one, questions? No? Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number two, four, dash, zero, zero, four, subject to staff recommendations.
A second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-four dash zero, zero, four, site development plan, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ian?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Same sign, thank you. Twenty-four dash zero, zero, four is recommended for approval, which takes us to twenty-four dash zero, zero, five.
Mr. Chairman, this is another case again, uh, site development plan being, uh, brought on by, uh, change of use in what was a prior structure. In this case, the former Burke's Cleaners at thirty-fifty-one Devils Glen Road. Uh, the aerial photo here shows lots eleven and twelve and nineteen and twenty. The request is for change of use from personal services, dry cleaning to restaurant general. The, uh, current future land use designation throughout this area is, uh, community commercial. The, uh, structure is currently zoned C two. And, uh, general restaurant is a permitted use within those boundaries. As you can see throughout most of the area, to the south, the north and the east, uh, land use is community commercial and to the west as well. And then it is public and semi-public, uh, for, uh, this area here where you have some retirement housing. The zoning is PR five overlay district in the retirement housing area. You do have a small parcel of A two that is a remnant here in this area. It used to be all A two where the residential area was. It's re-zoned back in the early nineties to all C two, pretty much, except for some remnants left over. And the gir- surrounding area pretty much is C two throughout. There is a C three area here. This is the area that is a car wash. And then, of course, Hy-Vee over here, which is, uh, C two. This area was actually platted, uh, sometime maybe as far back as the nineteen forties. And it is one point four 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 acres, consisting of four lots, essentially, is what this site is. At present, point six one seven acres, which are lots eleven and twelve, are being considered for this particular use. And again, the setbacks and the floor area ratio, uh, have been complied with, with the existing structure. This is the nineteen ninety-five site plan showing this structure. At such time, and it was used, of course, by Burke's Cleaners in the past. Now, at some time in the future, if there is any building that occurs, and this photo shows the lots equally spread here between lots eleven and twelve and nineteen and twenty. If for some reason, this area has to be modified as a parking lot, the city shall require acquisition of right-of-way for metal drive to be extended further north. This is part of the long-term proposal to extend metal drive as a public street. Overhead utilities, if there's any encroachment involved, that shall be requiring that the petitioner get permission to do any work underneath. These are very low-slung utilities for overhead utilities. So this issue that we want to, uh, take care of is, uh, if it needs to be broached. The, uh, again, all internal mechanical, electrical, fire safety issues, plumbing code issues shall have to be dealt with prior to any issuance of building permits. And this building is somewhat of a unique structure. Mr. Hunt has even contacted, uh, some, uh, of the state authorities on any issues. And that's up to the state if they want to look into any potential issues regarding the past uses on this whole county. Devils Glen Road is the means of access to this site. And there is circulation to the back. This overhead area here shall be removed to accommodate future parking on-site, as is required. Twenty-one spaces are presently required. Site development plan shows utility connections throughout. There is overhead electrical here and there's also electrical here. But for the most part, all of the utilities that are on-site are going to remain in place. It's just a matter of making sure that they accommodate the use that is going on in the interior. You have pedestrian access, which essentially what we're looking at is a four-foot sidewalk that is, uh, in use. And then internal paved areas, again, will, uh, provide the means of access in and out of the restaurant area. Off-street parking, twenty-one spaces shall be provided. There is a current one, uh, space available for ADA access. If any, again, any additional parking is needed to the east, that will trip that requirement, which will require dedication of right-of-way, uh, to the city to extend metal drive. And also, if the area, uh, business is enlarged within the structure, facilitating the need for more parking, there is that availability on these two lots here to be, uh, accommodating the parking. Given that there is no exterior improvement going on or increase of impervious surface, uh, there is no stormwater detention requirement at this time. And landscaping lighting is, as you see it on-site, it does meet our requirements and it shall remain in place and shall be required to be downcast. Staff in reviewing this proposal, we recommend approval with the conditions that are listed here in the report. And there are four of them. As I already mentioned, one about the internal issues regarding mechanical, electrical, fire safety, plumbing issues. Also, anything that involves any further development on adjoining lots nineteen and twenty, which means right-of-way acquisition, uh, that, um, the drive-up awning shall be demolished to accommodate all twenty-one parking spaces on-site. And that any construction within the overhead or underground easements on-site shall require permission of all utility companies involved. With that being said, I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Appreciate the presentation. Mark, anything to add?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Questions and comments from the commission on this matter, please?
Is there an existing or proposed utility easement at that division between the four lots there?
I believe the utility has acquired an easement. It does not show up on the Devils Glen Acres plat. But in dealing with the car wash, uh, prior, uh, and also businesses further south that were required to bury those utilities, uh, there is an easement present.
Thank you.
Are all four?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ian.
Greg, I, I saw a note on the, the site plan for the actual building itself that made me wonder if the entire space is being built out for this restaurant or only a portion of it?
It's a portion at the present. We are considering, however, that this whole area is considered to be a restaurant general, not a local-type restaurant, but a general restaurant because of the potential for the build-out. And that's important because under C two zoning, that use would be accommodated. So we wanted to make sure that any future expansion were to occur, that it wouldn't require any rezoning. So we evaluated that. Uh, at present, the area involved is pretty much here for customer service and then this area here for the kitchen and then bathrooms, uh, will be, uh, used right now. There is another additional area, bay area here, garage, that at present, uh, isn't contemplated being used at this time. Uh, but, uh, again, we look at this as the entirety of the building at some point may come under use as a restaurant.
Okay, so if, if they saw the need to expand, they have space under the same roof to do that first before they would expand to the east?
Yes, and then at that point, too, if that expansion were to occur, uh, the parking right now, the requirement is twenty-one spaces.
Mm-huh.
And that expansion in and of itself would almost immediately require then that they, uh, move further to the east for additional parking. And that then would trip the requirement for the right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, but if, if they were not expanding outside of this footprint, if they expanded into this, I'll call it a garage space, how would that impact the parking?
They, that would trip the requirement. There's two thousand thirty-four square feet presently, uh, for the restaurant area. So it won't take much in the way of expansion to get past the twenty-one space requirement. You know, your additional hundred square feet would put you in that area. And you would need to find that other space. And essentially, that is not anywhere else on-site at present, at least, uh, that might be accommodated.
I think the, the, the elephant in the room is, there's a lot, there's a, excuse me, I'm sorry. And sorry when you're not here to, to read your, um, facial expressions. But I think the elephant in the room is that there's a lot of space here. And it, and it's, there's a potential for the space to be occupied and used for the restaurant. Um, and if that occurs, it's going to require more parking. But for them to do that, they're going to have to get through architectural building review. And we're going to be aware of that process. And so we have a yet another level of review to, for the city to see that, that change coming. If they do, uh, want to expand, and I, and I hope they do, I hope they're very successful, to be honest with you. Um, uh, then they'll have to be able to meet all the building codes that would apply and, and the parking regulations that would apply as well. And, uh, they have the space, uh, adjoining to do that, so we feel pretty positive. And they're just not sure if they're ready to go that route yet. So they're showing you a smaller footprint inside the building. But we will certainly be reviewing those building, uh, permits when they come in and making sure they meet all the codes. If they trip additional fire safety, life safety or parking, uh, staff will be sure to enforce those and, and bring it back to you if necessary.
Okay.
And we've heard great things about the restaurant, just so you know, we're all big fans.
Janessa, do you have a question, too?
Uh, you may have covered this already. I was just trying to clarify. All four lots owned by the same?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Wonder?
So not to belabor the area in that, but so I see a lot of air in there. And is that, I'll call it two-thirds or three-quarters of the heavier line on the, um, right there? Yep. Is that what the parking's based on? Not the, all the use that's within that space?
This is the parking area right here.
Parking is over all that, no matter how many chairs they put inside there or anything else?
No.
It's on that, okay.
It's one space per hundred square feet and they have two thousand thirty-four square feet of service area.
Okay, makes sense.
So would it be correct to say the restaurant has been sized to, the restaurant's been maxed out in size to what parking is available? And there's really not anything that can happen in that vacant, uh, north end of the building until the parking is addressed?
I think that's a fair statement. We have some very, uh, good and creative architects that know how to design and, and use space and work code to the benefit of their clients. And we understand that, but I think that's a mostly true statement.
That, that's the kind of way I'm looking at it, too.
Okay.
Very nice. You should be a politician. All right, thank you. Anyone else with regard to this matter in the commission?
I think I could decide better if we could, you know, have a sample, maybe, of the food.
They got bribery laws, you can't do that, yeah, yeah. You're gonna have to pay. All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case twenty-four dash zero, zero, five, subject to staff recommendations.
Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-four dash zero, zero, five, site development plan for thirty-fifty-one Devils Glen Road. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Twenty-four dash zero, zero, five is recommended for approval, which takes us to commission update.
Yeah, try to keep it quick for you. We do have a comp plan that is being finalized. All your input has been received. We're doing the final touches with, uh, additional photographs and, and kind of making the layout look good. Um, that's going to come back to you for a vote, hopefully in March or April. And it'll be a polished, pretty document, um, and also a good document. So we also have some other plans that we're working on in concert with that, the downtown master plan as well and a new parks plan. Uh, you have a, um, statutory, you need to take a vote on the comp plan. That has to happen. The others, too, we'll bring to you just for reference, if you will. Uh, they won't require your vote, but I want you to know about them because they do, when we have these big land use decisions coming up, you should be familiar with the downtown master plan and the parks plan as well and be able to reference those documents. And that's my update.
All right, great. Appreciate that. Anything left for the, go to the order? Matt, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.